We're going to call to order the Tucson Public Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting, set for April 9th at 5:30 PM here at City Hall. If everybody would take a seat. The Board of Commissioners of the City of Tucson Public Housing Authority will stand in session. Can we go to roll call?
Ms. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Finbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachik?
Here.
Mr. Mohammed?
Here.
Mayor Rothschild?
Here. Item two.
Public hearing, approval of the City of Tucson and Pima County Consortium five-year action plan for fiscal year 2020. Report from City Manager, hearing resolution number PHA 2019-002.
City Manager's communication number 100 dated April 9th is received and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the City of Tucson-Pima County Consortium Public Housing Authority Agency Plan for City Fiscal Year 2020. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. I have no cards for this, to my knowledge. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on the public housing matter? If not, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Okay, we've got a motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution PHA 2019-002 by number and title only.
Resolution number PHA 2019-002 relating to public housing, approving the updated City of Tucson annual action plan for City Fiscal Year 2020 and HUD Fiscal Year 2019, authorizing and directing the adoption of the Public Housing Authority Updated Capital Fund Five-Year Plan and submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and declaring an emergency.
What's the council's pleasure?
I move we pass and adopt resolution PHA 2019-002.
Second.
Got a motion and second from the commission. Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Cunningham.
I want to thank the Housing Authority for some of the changes. A lot of them are logged time. One of the things you're doing is you're changing the hours and extending them so that families in need have the opportunity to pay their bills. Part of that was, for me, was, why didn't we do this before? So congratulations. There's some actually, you know, this is one of those weird ones where nobody ever talks about what this, we have this PHA meeting, I think, once a quarter or once a month, and nobody ever brings it up, but the changes in the package that we're voting on tonight are a long time coming, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Yeah, Councilman Finbres.
Mr. Gregory, can you explain the homeless preference program for the homeless youth further in terms of how this benefits the PHA, the youth and the referring agency?
Honorable Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners, the homeless preference program is designed, the changes are designed to allow us to serve more families. So the benefit to the Housing Authority is essentially that, one, we have some unused homeless preference program vouchers. This will allow us to utilize those vouchers faster by taking referrals from more than one place. So anybody who's involved in TPCH of the Tucson Collaboration in Homelessness can make referrals to us from a lot of different resources, whether it reentry resources, anybody who meets certain criteria could come through that program through a referral to help us utilize those vouchers. So that's the benefit to us. The benefit as it relates to youth is just simply, it's kind of the same as it is to us in that clients will be able to, one, be referred directly to us without having to go through some of the hoops that they had to go through previously, but also they'll have access to some support services that are good and that will support them and help them become self-sufficient. And then, three, how is it good for the community, the partners? They're mission-based, and we will help them to kind of meet their mission by providing this access directly to resources.
Thank you, and I have one last question. Is there an appeal process for the owner-initiated rent determination process with the PHA, and what does that entail?
So, we don't actually have a formal appeal process. However, we have always maintained that any time an owner disagrees with the written determination, we sit with them, we provide them with all the documentation that explains how we got to the information, and allow them to have a discussion with us about that. What we are trying to do now is working with our landlord partners and their membership organization to basically come up with the same software that our landlords are using. So one of the things that challenges us a little bit is the documentation and calculations that we use are a little different than those that are used by the private landlords that are in the market. So we're actually going to try and utilize a different software which will allow us to have more up-to-date information, and also allow us to just be kind of on the same page as they are.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, anybody have anything else on this matter? If not, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mr. Mohammed?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye. Resolution PHA 2019-002 passes by a vote of eight-zero. Item three.
Approval of Public Housing Authority minutes.
City Manager's communication number 106 dated April 9th is received and made part of the record. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 19, 2019 meeting?
I move the minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve the minutes. Any discussion on that matter? Hearing none. All in favor say, oh, it says roll call, I can't believe that for minutes. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mr. Mohammed?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye. The motion to approve the minutes of March 19, 2019 passes by a vote of eight-zero. Item four.
Adjournment.
Meeting of the Board of Commissioners is adjourned. The mayor and council will now convene our regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Finbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachik?
Here.
Mayor Rothschild?
Here. Item two.
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Invocation will be given by Rabbi Yehuda Sightlin from Habad of Tucson. After the invocation, ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, you have given us many gifts on this earth. One of them is wine, the fruit of the vine, which we will be using this holiday of Passover. During the Seder meal, we raise four cups of wine to celebrate your love and our freedom. King David said wine gladdens a person's heart, or Benjamin Franklin once said, wine is a constant proof that God loves us and loves to see us happy. Wine is a mixed blessing. It can make us joyful, but could also, an overdose could lead us to act foolishly and angry. Medrastan Khuma tells us that, before a person drinks, he is meek as a sheep; if he drinks appropriately, he's bald as a lion; if he drinks too much, he becomes dirty like a pig; and if he drinks to intoxication, he acts like a monkey. So how do we enjoy this gift of wine without the curse hidden in it? By using the other gift you gave us, the power of intelligence and sensibility. When we exercise this power to control our drinking, we can separate these two aspects, enjoying only the good while consigning the bad to the wastelands where it belongs. This is a lesson we demonstrate on Passover when we spill drops of wine out of our cup while listing the ten plagues you struck against ancient Egypt. We must use our ability of intelligence to separate the good from the bad, and while disposing of that bad, we ensure that whatever is left, whatever remains, is pure and can be used safely. Let us take this lesson to heart and conduct ourselves in all matters with intelligence and prudence, and thus may you grant us a happy and safe Passover, and let us say amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, C.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions, report from city manager.
City Manager's communication number 88 dated April 9th is received and made part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointment in the report?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the appointments of David Hoyt Johnson and Don Overbeck to the El Presidio Historic Zone Advisory Board, and Mark Levine and Robert Slocum to the Veterans Affairs Committee, and Sean Protsch for the Design Review Board.
Got a motion, the second. Is Mr. Johnson, Mr. Overbeck, Mr. Levine, Mr. Slocum, or Mr. Protsch here this evening? Okay. We thank them for their service, they all serve voluntarily to help the city of Tucson. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City Manager's communication number 89 dated April 9th is received and made part of the record. Time is scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilman Cunningham.
Congratulations to the University of Arizona Wildcats Women's Basketball Team for winning the Women's National Invitational Tournament. Sam Thomas, I believe she's a senior, she makes the all Pac-12 Academic Team. TT Starks and Luisa Alonso also make all Pac-12 honorable mention. This is a reflection of their coach, Coach Adia Barnes, who played here in Tucson 20 years ago, actually when I went to school. It was exciting when she came back. We didn't realize that this run, where they won six games down the stretch, as well as won two or three games at the end of the regular season in what is arguably the hardest women's conference in the country. Finally, special recognition to Ari McDonald, the sophomore who chose Tucson this year. She's only been a Tucsonan for one year, but she is an All-American, and she is also the, I believe, the highest point scorer in the history of the NCAA in one season. So congratulations to our Lady, University of Arizona Women's Basketball Team. Okay, go ahead, applause, it's fine, it's fine. All right. For those of you who have not yet filed their taxes, the United States VITA program, the United Ways VITA program is once again helping out with tax services for people with lower incomes and the elderly. So far this year, volunteers with the program have prepared nearly 2,500 returns and brought back nearly 2.5 million in refunds. VITA will be working until Monday at Abounding Grace Lutheran Church, which is on 2450 South Colb, and that's an opportunity, if you've never filed taxes or need some help filing taxes, you can go to Abounding Grace Lutheran Church at 2450 South Colb and get some help, and that church is in Ward 2.
Anybody else? Councilmember Durham?
This Saturday is the 20th Annual Egg Extravaganza at Mansfield Park. Join me from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM for egg hunts, pictures with the Easter bunnies, I think, there are two of them, and lots of fun and games. If you have questions, please contact the Donald Ligon Center at 791-3247.
Councilman Finbres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are proud to announce that Pima County J-TED will be building another educational campus at the Tucson Marketplace at the Bridges in Ward 5. The first building will be 50,000 square feet and have to have up to 900 students from TUSD and Sunnyside School Districts, both the University of Arizona, who is also breaking ground on the tech park at the Bridges this fall, and Pima Community College will also have a presence at the new J-TED Bridges Campus. I want to thank Kathy Prater, J-TED Superintendent, and J-TED staff for choosing the Bridges site, Gary Braav and BFL Construction, and Don Bourne and Bourne Companies for the donation of land and the capital lease to make this happen. I am looking forward to working with J-TED on the campus, another part of the Renaissance of Ward 5 in the south side. On Monday, March 25th, as Vice Mayor, I represent the city and read the city proclamation and presented a medallion of hope to the Saratoma Club of Tucson, who celebrated their 50th anniversary at the Viscount Suites Hotel. I want to thank them for all they do for our community. On Saturday, March 30th, I had the privilege of recognizing several community volunteers who helped the Pima County Jail Ministries Program and Chaplain Steve Martinez held at God's Church, 1749 East Broadway. These wonderful people work with the population with many programs. I want to congratulate them and Chaplain Martinez for the jail ministry program and their work and services. On Saturday, March 30th, I along with Councilmember Rahina Romero took part in the 2019 Cesar Chavez rally at Rudy Garcia Park. Tucson is the first and only city and government entity in Arizona to have a holiday to honor the work and legacy of Cesar Chavez. On Tuesday, April 2nd, as Vice Mayor, I had the honor and privilege of speaking to my fellow Vietnam era veterans for the Tucson commemoration of National Vietnam War Veterans Day at Aora Care, which is at 8616 East Broadway. More than 40 of my fellow Vietnam veterans, and I received a pen from the VFW and a copy of the National Vietnam War Veterans Day Memorial. I would like to thank the VFW, Humana, and Aora for holding this event. On Thursday, April 11th, Councilmember Durham and I will have the privilege of taking part of the ceremony by the Consulate General of France, which is giving a Legion of Honor Medal bestowed ceremony at Morgan McDermott Park, excuse me, Post 7. The ceremony is for World War II veteran Magarito S. Ramirez, age 99, who lives in Tucson and has been appointed to the rank of chivalier knight as a U.S. Army veteran. He has been recognized for his designated distinguished service in France during World War II. And on Thursday, April 18th, the 30th Annual LULAC Educators Awards Banquet will take place at the Doubletree Hotel. Individuals will be honored for their work and commitment to bettering the lives of youth in our community. Mayor Jonathan Rothschild and Councilmember Scott will receive the Lifetime Achievement Award, and Mark Kerr, Chief of Staff, will receive a Presidential Award. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item four.
City Manager's report summary of current events.
City Manager's communication number 90 dated April 9th is received and made part of the record. This time is been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item five.
Liquor license applications, report from city manager.
City Manager's communication number 91 dated April 9th is received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, in this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have three requests for new license. Under item 5C, we have 16 requests for special events. Staff has indicated that all they applicant are in compliance with city requirements. Councilmember Kazachik will declare conflict of interest on items C12 and 13. An appropriate motion would be to forward items B1 through 3, C1 through 11, and 14 through 16 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
And that's the one we all get to vote on, right?
Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I'd like to move that motion and point out that one of the events, the special events, is for the Tanque Verde River Run, which is celebrating the revitalization of Tanque Verde Creek.
Great. Got a motion, a second on that motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, then the second motion is C12 and 13.
Your Honor, I'd like to move the two items that relate to University of Arizona.
Got a second on that? Got a motion and second on that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That motion passes, we'll say unanimously, let the record reflect that Councilmember Kazachik recused himself on that. All right, let's move on to item six.
Call to the audience.
This time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue, except for items that are on for public hearing at this meeting. Please make sure you've read the information on the back of the speaker's card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review a matter, ask for my replacement on future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. So we've got about 14 cards here tonight, probably not going to get everyone in. We've got some duplicative cards, but I will assure that, I will assure that there is representation speaking from every topic that we've got in front of us, and if someone takes a little less time, then of course we can get some extra cards in. So we will start with Marie Fordney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very tall.
Is it on? Is there a?
Ron?
Okay, we can hear you now.
Yes. Hi, my name is Marie Fordney. I'm the Executive Director at the Southern Arizona Children's Advocacy Center. We are the place where abuse ends and healing begins. Our mission is to provide a safe, compassionate, healing environment for children who have been a victim or have witnessed a crime. The vast majority of our clients are children who have been abused. Our goals are to ensure that every child has the safety they need to tell what happened to them, and then to provide healing services for families, while also working with our partners in law enforcement to hold abusers accountable. And that brings me to why I'm here. We have a great partnership with the city, and I'm here to thank you all. We work with the City of Tucson, specifically Tucson Police Department and those detectives who are really smart, dedicated professionals. We work with them every day. We were really honored to have Mayor Rothschild come and read a proclamation for us last week at the launch of Child Abuse Prevention Month. So this month, April, is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we invite you all to join us and support us, as the mayor did just last week. Talk about the work that we do in preventing child abuse and addressing child abuse, and on April 12th, you and your staff are invited to Go Blue for Kids. It's Go Blue for Kids Day. You just wear blue, it really is as simple as it sounds. Take a picture, and you can email it to us, or post it on social media, just to help us raise awareness that abuse is happening in our community every day, that we will not stand for it, and that we are all here united to stop it. That's all I have, I have packets for you as well.
All right, thank you, Marie, and if you could give those to the clerk, she'll get them to us. Thank you, Marie, appreciate it. Robert Royce?
I appreciate the chance to speak this evening. This is, for the record, my 264th city council presentation since January of 2001. I took some time to decide to run for mayor. Last summer, I promised the voters that if they voted to keep our elections this year, I would try to do something about the situation here in Tucson. I went to bed on election night, and it looked like the voters were voting to change the charter, and I thought, oh, I don't have to run for mayor. And I woke up in the morning and read the paper, and apparently they had rejected the charter change, and I do have to run for mayor. It's taken me a while to psych myself up for it. I filed the paperwork the first week of January. I have been collecting signatures, but I've also been working on my own psyche. I'm not interested in being just another politician corrupted by power, so I sort of reduced myself to practically nothing for a couple of weeks, and then I just came to a realization that my entire public life has been an exercise in Jeffersonian principles, and I must trust myself, so I'm pretty well psyched. The things that I have to offer the people of the city, no one else will. Pure water, no effluent in the drinking water. If I'm going to lose this election in November, the people of the city are going to have to vote to drink effluent and continue to distribute contaminated water. I will put a stop to both of those. Financial responsibility? I've seen tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in wasted money authorized by this board with absolutely no power to stop it. So the citizens of this city have my promise that I will absolutely put this city on So the citizens of this city have my promise that I will absolutely put this city on a path to financial responsibility and end cronyism as only I can. The city desperately needs my textbook Jeffersonian approach to financial responsibility. So here I am. The things I have to offer the city, no one else can or will. And to lose this election, people are going to have to vote to continue the status quo, the financial irresponsibility, the bad water policy, and et cetera. Well, they're going to have to vote to continue cronyism, which I'm absolutely pledged to own, pledged to stop. I cannot get this nomination petition finished by myself. I'm going to need help. I have packets here with petitions and instructions and et cetera. 100 lines here for... So, I mean, I'm going to try to get 20 people. I am in the process of getting 20 people to give me 100 signatures each, which takes 10 hours. People want to sign? I'm getting a very positive response to my campaign. It's just a matter of getting on the ballot, and I need help. Because if I'm not on the ballot, I mean, if I don't file the petitions on the 29th of May, everything I have been lobbying for is going to go up like smoke.
Mr. Royce, times. Thank you. Jay Wells?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmen and women. Jay Wells, and for the record, I am President of the Rito Racetrack and the Rito Park Foundation. The Rito Park Foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization, and in 2015, we received a contract to operate the Rito Racetrack and the park, farmers' markets, et cetera, on the benefit of the citizens of Pima County. I actually came here today originally to object to a proposal to allow an OTB parlor to be opened up in Midtown Liquors, and I do appreciate the due diligence done by all of you to understand this very, very complicated issue. In a nutshell, we have absolutely nothing against Midtown Liquor. But by the way that the legislation has manipulated over the years, Pima County is the only county left in the state for Rito Racetrack to run OTB parlors on our own. We would have to run 140 live days of racing. That is an antiquated statute, but the other powers in the state are holding our feet to the fire and fighting us with a bill that we have pending, just got out of the Rules Committee on Monday and is passed through the Senate, going to go to the floor soon. So we have asked and gratefully to you that you listen to this issue to hold this off. We do hope that this bill will pass. What that would allow us to do is not just have parlors on our own, but also the option to partner with other outside entities so that we get a bit of a commission. For a little background, we did receive about $200,000 a year in commissions paid to us by the dog track. And through the manipulation that happened to phase out live dog racing, the dog racing folks are now allowed to have parlors with no live racing at all, and we lost the commission. So we were the loser in that grand scheme. It's created a de facto monopoly for Turf Paradise, which is the large track in Phoenix. And while we have no objection to OTB being here in Pima County, we do believe that Rito should get a share of those funds generated in the Tucson and Pima County market. To give you an example, for the owner of Midtown Liquor, having an OTB parlor in his facility does nothing to his P&amp;L. It has nothing on his balance sheet. He is allowing Turf Paradise to come in, and where I come from, we call it carpet bagging, set his business up in Midtown Liquor, and 100% of those dollars would flow to Maricopa County. Of those, the way the pair mutual works is for every dollar wagered, the winners get 80 cents. The 20 cents remaining is divided between the horseman's purses and the operator of the parlor. So in this particular case, for a dollar wagered in Pima County, 20 cents would be taken out. Of those two dimes, one dime would go to Turf Paradise for their coffers, and one dime would pay to support horsemen in racing at Maricopa County at Turf Paradise and not here at Rito. We are a small track. We are 75 years old. We have a partnership with the University of Arizona now, and I want to make something clear. We have been a strong little track. We are doing everything right. We had almost 50,000 people show up over the 12 days of racing.
Mr. Wells, our little buzzer's not working, but your time's up.
Well, I will thank you.
Now it's working.
See you over the next thing. Thanks again.
Thank you. Mary Kelso?
Hi there. I'm Mary Kelso. I work for AskMe449, and I'm representing the blue collar workers. I live on the east side. I've lived here since 1973, and I live in Ward 4. I've been representing the blue collar workers since I started working in the city approximately about four years ago, and I left the city and working full-time for AskMe now. So I have more time to, you know, give to not just the city, but the other blue collar workers throughout the city. And first off, I'd like to thank mayor and council so much for absorbing the costs of the insurance increase of 6.6%. That means a lot to us, because I know that 3.9 million, if we had to pay it, we can't even afford gallons of milk now, okay? I mean, let's face it, we can hardly pay our bills right now. So that means a lot that you guys are able to cover that for us. And another thing I'd like to thank you for is bringing the bottom-up so far to $13, because that's going to help the guys that are coming in. But I need to address the fact of the decompression, okay? And we've talked about this, we've discussed it. You know, we've got employees that have been here for over 10 years, and these folks are the ones that are hurting the most. I mean, they've gone through that depression with us and the recession, and they know, you know, they didn't get those pays, they didn't get those raises. And when those last two raises came in, you're talking about 4.5%. And on a blue collar salary, most of them got, you know, maybe 70 cents. Well, I shouldn't say most of them. Some of them got 70 cents. Some of them got 20 cents, some of them got below 20 cents. Most of them were like in the 35 cent range, you know? That doesn't buy much. And you're looking at guys that have got two jobs. They're working two different jobs, their wives are working or their partners are working, you know? They've got their children out there working so that they can afford to pay their house payments and everything. So we're really counting on you this time to take a look. Our budget is looking better, we're bringing money into the city. We need... It's our turn now, you know? It's the blue collar workers. We've taken care of everybody else. Let's take care of those blue collar workers that have stuck by you all this time, okay? Thanks so much.
Mary, before you leave, I just wanted to make sure that that concern, because that is something that AskMe has been concerned about, the decompression from the bottom-up, I just wanted to make sure that the city manager has a response for us, because according to our budget, the decompression is going to happen this year. That's why we couldn't move from minimum wage, which is $11 an hour, to 15, like Phoenix the city of Phoenix just did.
Right.
Because we had to deal with the decompression. So my question is for the city manager, are we dealing with decompression in this year's budget as we move the minimum wage to 1320 an hour?
Mr. Mayor, just as a part of a report, I'd be happy to answer that, and I will also get into more detail as we get into the budget. But just to refresh your memory, the first step moving to 1320 an hour, I believe, is the bottom, also addresses compression caused by that. And so each year as we move that, we'll address the compression that's caused by those increases.
So that decompression numbers are included in this year's, this coming year's budget?
That's correct.
Does that answer your concern?
It does, but I'd like to know how much it is, and I'm sure we'll be discussing that in the near future.
Well, I just want to make sure that the city manager enjoys, and the Human Resources Department follows up with AskMe, just to make sure that these questions are answered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Christopher Puka?
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Puka.
Oh, yeah, okay.
My name is Christopher Puka. I'm a Tucson physician and an active member of Represent Us, the largest bipartisan anti-corruption organization within the United States. Represent Us strongly supports the efforts of Outlaw Dirty Money, a group of our fellow Arizona citizens, in petitioning the people of Arizona to endorse a ballot initiative that would amend the state constitution to prohibit large amounts of anonymous or dark money from our elections. Represent Us applauds the Tucson City Council's consideration of a resolution to oppose the anonymous insinuation of dark money into the elections and political life of the old pueblo. This is an essential step to ensure the continuation of governance dedicated to the common good of all the members of our community. This also could be a significant step towards the creation of a beloved community, as advocated by Dr. Martin Luther King, within our city and even our county. At the present time, our political community, humanity, indeed the planet itself, are endangered by tribalistic forces that exploit partisan politics, religion, ideology, dogma, junk science, and the misguided concept of individual self-interest based on greed and fear. Of all the divisive forces contributing to the great suffering within the global community, corruption, however, is the most malignant, because once all the lawmakers, justices, and governors have been bought by the powerful and the rich. Corruption would have been successful in dismantling the very machinery necessary for the existence of a self-governing democracy, and would have destroyed our culture based on the shared values of justice, fairness, and decency. In corruption's karmic weight will be the death of our democracy. The conquering oligarchs then will be able to dispense with the charade of separate political parties. I urge the Tucson City Council to pass a resolution denouncing the corruptive use of dark money in our city's political life. I also urge all Arizona citizens to sign the petition for a state constitutional amendment to outlaw dirty or dark money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That whole crowd here. Dan Millis?
Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dan Millis. I am a Sierra Club Borderlands Program Manager for the Grand Canyon Chapter, based here in Tucson, and I live in Ward 5. Sometimes I run into you, Steve, when we're jogging around Catalina Vista neighborhood. But also, quick shout-out to our Union Sisters and Brothers. Sierra Club is a participant in Blue-Green Alliance, so we're with you. I'm here today to thank mayor and council for your resolution number 22763, passed on June 6th of 2017. That is your no-border-wall resolution. And we are here to thank you on behalf of Sierra Club's 3 million members and supporters, several thousand of whom are based here in the Tucson area. And speaking of numbers, I'm here to share a few numbers with you today. City of Tucson is one of 37 communities across the border and beyond that have passed a resolution like this one. A resolution that says most Americans do not want a border wall and that those monies could be spent elsewhere in ways that benefit our communities. 37 communities. I have a list here of the 512-plus organizations that are against the border wall, and it's quite a long list, as you can see. So Sierra Club is not the only organization that's out there that's with you and asking that these types of resolutions be passed and supported. 2,845 scientists have signed on to the no-border-wall cause, and the reason for that is that these border walls actually destroy habitat and block the movements of wildlife, while at the same time actually not doing what they're supposed to do and not addressing any of our complex immigration problems at the border. So again, on behalf of those 3 million members and supporters, the thousands of members and supporters here in Tucson, I'm speaking with nearly 3,000 scientists, more than 500 organizations. Don't worry, this is scrap paper, okay? We're the Sierra Club. We're not going to waste all this paper. And the 37 other entities, and I know that you get pushback sometimes from some of the companies that build these walls, but they should know better. And the fact that this mayor and council has been able to stand up and say, no, we're not going to invest in companies that build border walls, that makes a big difference, and we need all the help we can get right now. We just found out about a plan that the Trump administration has to take billions of dollars that are intended to support our troops, they're intended to support military families and build things like clinics and schools overseas and do other military construction, and these billions would instead be rerouted towards building a wall on the border. That's not okay. My colleague here from our Military Outdoors Program can speak more about that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill DuPont? Is Bill here?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I was here, Bill DuPont, representing friends of Tucson's birthplace. I was here earlier this afternoon during your study session, and we are delighted that you're looking at a historic landmark to be placed over the Tucson Origins Heritage Park. But we would request that there be an extension given, and I ran home with my orange-colored crayon and tried to color in what we would like to be considered in that area. And the reason for this is it connects to the river, the Santa Cruz River, and the river was the lifeline to all civilization, and this is an important element that should be preserved for the Tucson Origins Heritage Park. Under that area are the spider irrigation systems that were uncovered and are the oldest in the world almost. We're looking at 4,100 years of civilization, continuous cultivation, and so we think it's a very important sliver. I understand it might be valuable property, but it's an important story line to our existence here in the city of Tucson and our beginning, and that's what makes us different from Phoenix. So let's celebrate our differences and make sure that this land is preserved. It was actually the Fiesta open space for the Tucson Origins Heritage Park, so I will give you these, just so that we have this on a matter of record, that we are looking at doing this. We'll do a more formal presentation, but I just wanted this to be in the loop for further discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Paul Parisi?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Paul Parisi. I'm here representing for Tucson. We're a nonprofit organization that seeks biblical solutions for city problems. Tonight, I'm going to tell you about just a biblical principle, which is if you have judgment without mercy, you'll be treated without mercy, and mercy prevails over judgment. What I'm talking about is our criminal justice system. Arizona has the fourth-highest incarceration rate in the country, and we take this seriously to reform the criminal justice legislation that we have at the Capitol. On Thursday, April 18th, and I apologize on that date, that's the same date as the Lulac Dinner. We have done this prior, but please invite other people that aren't coming to this event. From 6:30 to 8:30 at Gap Ministries, 2861 North Fulham Wells Road, we're having a forum. We have a panel discussion with Pima County Public Defender Nathan Wade, Pima County Chief Trial Counsel Jonathan Mosher, and Pima County Reentry Coordinator Manny Bahias. And what we're going to do is address issues, and also the judgment part too, because there's victims of crimes that deserve restitution for what goes on. It's a free event, and it's going to be a free dinner, and the dinner is a gourmet dinner. And this sounds unbelievable, but Gap Ministries has a culinary school that trains people coming out of prison, the art of being a... On Thursday, April 18th, and I apologize on that date, that's the same date as the Lulac Dinner, we had done this prior, but please invite other people that aren't coming to this event. From 6:30 to 8:30 at Gap Ministries, 2861 North Fulton Wells Road, we're having a forum. We have a panel discussion with Pima County Public Defender Nathan Wade, Pima County Chief Trial Counsel Jonathan Mosher, and Pima County Reentry Coordinator Manny Bahias. And what we're going to do is address issues, and also the judgment part, too, because there's victims of crimes that deserve restitution for what goes on. It's a free event, and it's going to be a free dinner, and the dinner is a gourmet dinner. And this sounds unbelievable, but Gap Ministries has a culinary school that trains people coming out of prison, the art of being a chef. And the person who runs it, his name is John, he won the competition for Iron Chef in Tucson. Does a wonderful job. And last year, we had it, and people were so happy, not only with the great food, but the attitude of the people serving it and the great discussion of it. You have to register to come to it. You can either do it on our website, the number 4tucson.com, or 4tucson Facebook page, or 4tucson Government Domain Facebook page. And if you know anybody, just shoot me an email at paul@4tucson.com, and I'll personally register. Thank you.
Raul Ramirez, is Raul still here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Raul Ramirez. I'm a resident of Ward 1. I represent only myself. And what I want to talk about today is water. I have a title for this little platica. So we live in a desert, and this is water versus development. In the last decade, downtown has had phenomenal growth, given favorable incentives to developers. Yet recently, with Lake Mead approaching the 1075 mark, we have been made more aware of the drought, which has lasted up to approaching 20 years. While a water shortage has been averted and the contingency plan favors municipalities like Tucson, we must remember that Tucson is a desert city. We are all familiar with water shortages, given the demise of Santa Cruz River and how reservoirs dropped in Tucson due to overpumping. It was only through the cap delivery that we have been kept afloat, and there's a pun here. While, as I follow discussions, the city of Tucson has 44 years of water. If for some reason the CAP water were cut, that's what we have. In a recent water newsletter, Water Matters, it congratulated homeowners, ratepayers for their overall reduction of water and also increase in water harvesting. However, what was missing for me was, and it's a question, what is being asked of the development community? For example, by 2020, Tucson Downtown, the Core will have at least 2,000 new units, and that came pretty much from Downtown Partnership, along with five or six new hotels. I bring this to your attention because downtown has the oldest infrastructure. What will happen when problems arise with the water delivery system in the Core? Yet last year, ratepayers saw increases in water while southside projects were given waivers regarding the water connections. I commend Councilwoman Romero for voting against the developer fee waivers and also voting against the increases in water rates. In closing, the Bureau of Reclamation warns that the drought will continue for at least 50 years, with each of the five decades having periods of drought. In a report issued by the Tucson Citizens Water Advisory Committee in February of 2018, they warned that the cost of CAP water will increase as the drought continues, and also other increases had to do with improved infrastructure and new wells. However, I predict that without a corollary increase for developers, ratepayers will have a rebellion in your hands.
Raul, if you can finish up, we've got more people to get to.
Possible action: rescind the water waivers for southside developers. Number two, include water harvesting requirements in your infill incentive for developers. And three, and most important, commission a study on what other steps can be taken for water security for the next 100 years.
Thank you, Raul. All right, so we've kind of heard representative stuff from everybody that is here. I'm going to take three more cards because I think there's a lot of people here that want to speak. I will not be able to get to everybody, but I'm going to take one more on the dark money. I'm going to take one more on the border wall. I'm going to take one more on the AFME. So we'll start with Merrill Eisenberg.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you on behalf of the Citizens Right to Know, also known as Outlaw Dirty Money. We are an Arizona group that is collecting signatures for a ballot initiative to outlaw dark money in Arizona state elections. We are joined tonight by, as you have already heard, the Tucson Chapter of Represent Us, a national anti-corruption organization. We are delighted to see Resolution 23007 on your consent agenda for this evening, calling for full transparency of significant political fundraising and spending, for increased disclosure of activities by paid lobbyists, and for stronger enforcement of campaign finance rules. The purpose of campaign finance rules has always been the prevention of corruption. This is not a party-specific or left-versus-right concern. Indeed, both the left and the right have been engaged in promoting enormous anonymous spending on political advertising ever since the Supreme Court Citizens United decision in 2010. But it was Antonin Scalia, no lefty for sure, who said, quote, "Requiring people to stand up in public for their public acts fosters civic courage, without which democracy is doomed." Resolution 23007 demonstrates that as politicians, you believe in democracy and are willing to protect its integrity here in Tucson. We are grateful for your courage and wisdom in making this proclamation. As you point out, action is needed at both federal and state levels. Since it looks like the present Arizona Legislature is moving in the opposite direction, it will be up to the people to gather signatures to place the Citizens Right to Know on the ballot in 2020. We have already launched our campaign here in Tucson and hope you will join us in promoting our initiative in the coming months. Thanks again for Proclamation 23007 and for making us proud of our local government.
Thank you, Merrill. Jason Rickel? Is Jason Rickel here? If he is, let's get on up.
Hi, City Council members. My name is Jackson Rickel. I'm a local educator, past wildlife biologist. I wanted to thank the City Council for passing the No Border Wall Resolution. I'm joined by two colleagues. Dan already spoke. I speak for many friends and colleagues in support of this resolution. Personally, I see the border wall construction as an ineffective, wasteful political statement. That's my opinion. It's also terrible for wildlife. The more local government entities that pass resolutions like this one, the more pressure we put on current federal powers that be to cease border wall construction and maybe instead use $13 billion to improve ports of entry infrastructure, which is greatly needed, and it would help lots and lots of people. I understand the appeal to local contractors to taking wall construction contracts. That's a lot of money going into the pockets of the owners and operators of the construction companies, and it helps their employees make a living. I get that. But lines must be drawn. It's not right for us to support wasteful federal policies. This is the mode through which we can resist. Local contractors put pressure on feds to improve ports of entry. They're needed. They're good jobs. They're very useful. Again, City Council, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the last card we'll take tonight is Mike Acuna, if Mike's here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. My name is Mike Acuna. I'm a trade specialist with the Parks Department. I've been an active employee, well, I've been a full-time employee since January of '04 and a part-time employee since September of '99. I am here, of course, to discuss the matter of wage increases. The last increase we had, I believe, was 2%. For me personally, that equaled up to 38 cents, which doesn't seem to be a whole lot. I know a lot of coworkers who've gotten a lot less. I also have come up with a couple of ideas that might be attractive. One is to take into consideration years of service for employees, i.e., the longer amount of service, the more amount of raise, the higher percentage. And another consideration would be the amount of service someone has been in their specific field. I know a lot of people that are in a new high position. They haven't been there for very long, and I think that the city might save a little bit of money on each idea. I would hope that you would take this in consideration. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, that's going to bring to a close call the audience for the night. We got just about everybody, but not everybody. If you put in a card tonight, if you let us know in advance, we'll be back here April 23rd. If you want to, we can prioritize you then. So thank you for coming and being heard. Thank you. All right, let's move on to Item 7.
Consent Agenda Items A through J.
Reports from the City Manager on the consent agenda are received and to have made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, Item A is approval amendments. Item B is Boards, Committees, and Commissions changing the name of the 2018 Bond Oversight Commission to 2018 Parks Plus Connections Bond Oversight Commission, amending Ordinance 11572. Item C is Boards, Committees, and Commissions extending the term of service for the Grant Road Corridor Planning Task Force, amending Resolution 20632. Item D is real property sale in exchange of surplus property at 1221 East Broadway for the Broadway Boulevard, Euclid Avenue to Country Club Road Improvement Project. Item E is real property sale in exchange of surplus property at 1303 East Broadway Boulevard for the Euclid Avenue to Country Club Road Improvement Project. Item F has been continued at the request of staff. Item G is an intergovernmental agreement with the Phoenix Police Department, supporting the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Item H is a grant agreement with Arizona Criminal Justice Commission for the Paul Coverdel Forensic Scientists Improvement Grant Program. Item I is a resolution calling for supportive legislation requiring full disclosure and transparency of political fundraising, spending, and for consistent enforcement of campaign finance rules. Item J is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the Consolidated Plan Update and Year One Annual Action Plan Consultant. An appropriate motion would be to approve Items A through J with the exception of F.
Get that motion, please.
I move we approve Items A through J with the exception of F on the consent agenda.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Let's move on to Item 8.
Public hearing, application by Turf Paradise for an off-track paramutual wagering site at Midtown Tavern, 3620 North First Avenue. Your Honor, we have had a request to continue this item, so this item will be continued to the meeting of May 21st. It will be here at City Hall, 255 West Alameda, at or after 5:30 PM.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about that. Will that be another public hearing? Same issue, agenda is the same?
It will be, agenda is the same, so we're continuing the public hearing to May 25th. First.
Okay, let's move on to Item 9.
Zoning, C91820, Arizona Vascular Specialist Speedway Boulevard, R1 to O1, City Manager's Report, Ordinance Adoption, Request Report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11635.
City Manager's Communication Number 99, dated April 9, is received and to have made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately 1.27 acres from R1 to O1 zoning. The rezoning site is located on the south side of East Speedway Boulevard, approximately 1,000 feet east of Wilmot Road. The zoning examiner has recommended approval of O1 zoning with an additional condition to incorporate mitigation for the demolition of a contributing historic structure. Staff recommends approval of O1 zoning and adoption of the ordinance with the additional condition. Is there an applicant or representative present for this? Could you come forward, please? State your name and your relationship to either owner or property.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian Underwood, and I'm with the Planning Center to East Congress here in Tucson, and we're the planning consultant on the project.
Okay. Is your client agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read Ordinance 11635 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11635, relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located on the south side of East Speedway Boulevard, approximately 1,000 feet east of Wilmot Road, in KC91820, Arizona Vascular Specialist R1 to O1, and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, just want to thank the Planning Center and the Harold Belwright Neighborhood Association. They've done a really good job collaborating. This continues a linear office buffer that exists along Speedway that actually gives some separation of the neighborhood. Moreover, the Planning Center has agreed to augment the neighborhood association's aesthetics with regard to the historical district. This includes upgrading and augmentation of signage, foliage, and other amenities. So, well done, and with that, I'd like to move this item.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Let's move to Item 10.
Annexation, Raytheon West Annexation District, Ordinance Adoption, Report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11636.
City Manager Communication Number 93, dated April 9, is received and to have made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read Ordinance 11636 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11636, relating to annexation, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Tucson, Pima County, Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter 4, Arizona Revised Statutes, by annexing thereto the Raytheon West Annexation District property, more particularly described in the body of this ordinance.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass and adopt Ordinance 11636.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Ordinance 11636 passes by a vote of 7-0. Let's move to Item 11.
Economic Development, Approval of Retail Development Tax Incentive Agreement with Main Gate Partners LLC and Core Tucson Main Gate LLC, Report from City Manager, Resolution Number 23012.
City Manager's Communication Number 109, dated April 9, is received and to have made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read Resolution 23012 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23012, relating to economic development incentives and real property, authorizing and approving the retail tax incentive development agreement between the city of Tucson and Core Tucson Main Gate LLC for the Graduate Hotel and the Collective Apartments at Main Gate, located on the southeast corner of Tindal Avenue and East Second Street.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, the benefits of this project far exceed the incentive package. There'll be 244 more apartments that may help relieve some of the stress on student housing pressure in the surrounding area, as well as significant programmable public space in the area. It's a $71 million project, cost with over 100 FTEs, and I move that we pass the item.
23012.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second there. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Resolution 23012 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 12.
Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Appointment to the Civil Service Commission. This item is continued from the meeting of March 19, 2019. Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 96, dated April 9, is received and to have made part of the record. What is the council's pleasure? Councilmember Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Civil Service Commission is one of our most important at the city of Tucson. It's a quasi-judicial governing board to be kept independent and at a distance from politics. It is not to be swayed by city leadership or the mayor and council as written into the city charter. It determines the fate of our city employees' futures, determining whether our employees are wrongfully terminated. are wrongfully terminated. It also has the authority to make the final decision on labor contracts if city management isn't able to come to an agreement with the bargaining units for all four of the city's labor groups. The responsibility is great and requires experience and education in a magnitude of laws, policies, and contracts. Per the city charter, the Civil Service Commission is given an independent attorney to guide them through the laws and ensure their meetings are run unbiased and by the book. Our city attorney recently removed the Civil Service Attorney, John Kastner, due to a potential conflict of interest with another client he is representing, and there will be a new attorney assigned to the commission. The new attorney's first meeting will start later this month. Unfortunately, there will be a learning curve, which makes the role of the Civil Service Commission members even more important to ensure we keep consistency, continuity, leadership, and historic knowledge of the rules and laws that govern the commission. Max Parks has served on the commission for five years and has been voted as the chairman by the other commission members for the past four years. He is known by his fellow colleagues on the commission, the commission attorney, and city human resources staff, to be an asset, excellent at running the hearings, fair, impartial, knowledgeable, and a great leader who empowers the commission members to ask questions and express their opinions freely. Recently, a complaint was made regarding Mr. Parks by a few city staff members, which this council took very seriously. My office and others have listened to multiple days of civil service hearings. We went through years of meeting reports, met or communicated with over a dozen different witnesses to the commission hearings, and have not been able to find proof of the allegations presented. We take that very seriously. I realize we have a tough decision on our hands, as Councilmember Durham has requested that we appoint a new commission member, Carol West. I have known Carol since 1991. I have nothing but confidence and respect for her. But this decision for me is based solely on keeping this commission with strong leadership, having historic knowledge of the many rules, policies, and laws in place to accurately determine the fate of our city employees and labor contract negotiations. Therefore, I move we reappoint Max Parks to the Civil Service Commission for a full term.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on Councilmember Scott's motion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
You know, I'll read the resolution into the record.
Go ahead.
Resolution number 23001 relating to the Civil Service Commission reappointing Max B. Parks as the Civil Service Commissioner for a six-year term commencing on March 27, 2019, and expiring on March 26, 2025, fixing annual compensation and declaring an emergency. Ms. Romero?
No.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
No.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Februs?
No.
Mr. Kazachik?
No.
Mayor Rothschild?
No. All right, do we have a separate motion or resolution?
I move resolution 23002 appointing Carol West as a Civil Service Commissioner for the six-year term commencing March 27, 2019.
Do we have a, we have a second on that? Any discussion? I'll say something, because I chair the police Public Safety Personal Retirement Police and Fire Police Public Safety Personal Retirement System Board, and Mr. Parks serves on that board with me. I have not personally observed some of the interactions, some of the ones that we've received the complaints on, and had I observed such interactions, I would have intervened. And as chair, it's easy for me to do so. It's not so easy when you are already the chair of a committee to intervene and maybe even understand those complaints. So, I agree that we have a difficult choice here tonight, but given what I have reviewed and the folks that I have talked to and have come to me about the complaints, and I think everyone understands that, we do have a quality choice and somebody who is a known quantity and knows the city well. I look forward to working with Mr. Parks for the rest of my term on the other board, but sometimes it's good to make a change, and that's where I'm going to be. Councilmember Romero?
You know, I just want to make a couple of points that I believe as well that we have two good choices in front of us. The complaints that I've reviewed as well, I want to make sure that we add, that we add value to those complaints. And mostly, I think that the two choices we have in front of us are good. I think that I will move to the motion, I will support the motion to appoint Carol West. I think that her service to the city is very valuable and will bring a very fair perspective to the Civil Service Commission. Saying that, I feel very uncomfortable with the process that was used for this appointment. As I had talked about earlier with the historic zone, the Barrio Historico Zone Advisory Board earlier on, the process to appoint individuals, especially to the Civil Service Commission, which is a very important quasi-judicial commission, I believe we need to make sure that all of the stakeholders that have, that should have a say, including council members, should have an opportunity to do so. The previous processes used to appoint for the Civil Service Commission have not really been too open, and I think that the stakeholders should have an opportunity, including mayor and council, including employees of the City of Tucson, including employee groups and unions that represent employees of the City of Tucson. And so, I would like to see if the city attorney could bring a study session item and define a process much more in terms of an appointment to the Civil Service Commission, because we should have been given the opportunity to have a more transparent, open-to-the-public conversation. So, I will support this appointment, but I want us to reach a better process in how to appoint for this commission, because it's an important commission, as said by Councilmember Scott.
And I'd have the suggestion, actually, to broaden that a little. We have all these commissions. The way they're appointed are all different. Sometimes it's one councilperson and the mayor, sometimes it's anybody can do it, and there are varying levels of these commissions. For instance, this commission, it does make decisions that become almost matters of law. And it would be nice to see a survey of that and let us kind of look at all of that, because I don't think it's just here. I think overall, we could have a better process. Councilmember Durham?
I want to thank Max Parks for his several years of committed service to the Civil Service Commission. I've known Carol West since I worked as Nina Traysoff's Chief of Staff in 2005 and 2006, and I believe she will make an excellent Civil Service Commissioner.
Any other discussion? If not, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
How do we make sure that we have a conversation, mostly a study session item, on the process used? I mean, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that there's, maybe we can expand the conversation, but this particular commission is an important one, and it has important matters in front of them. So, how should we proceed with that thought?
Councilmember Romero, and you're certainly correct. This is one of the, the only commissions that's a charter commission, and we can schedule for a study session so that we can provide you material upfront about what the qualifications are, what the functions are of the Civil Service Commission, and propose a process for your consideration and approval for how candidates are brought forward or vetted in advance of any vacancies.
Thank you. Then let's do that. I don't know if I have to do that in form of a motion.
No, we'll schedule it. Rogers got it. We'll put it on where we can. Okay, let's vote. Roll call.
I will read the resolution of the record, Your Honor. Resolution number 23002 relating to the Civil Service Commission appointing Carol West as the Civil Service Commissioner for a six-year term commencing on March 27, 2019, and expiring on March 26, 2025, fixing annual compensation and declaring an emergency. Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
I'd like to make a comment. I certainly welcome Ms. West to the commission, and I have no fault with her ability and her interest in this, and I thank her for that, but I still say that Mr. Parks has a really excellent record, and I hate to see him go, but in the meantime, I thank him for his service to this commission. It's very, very important. So, I'm going to vote no, but it's no disrespect to Ms. West.
Mr. Februs?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
And I thank Max as well, and I vote aye for Carol West.
Mayor Rothschild?
Similar thoughts. I don't, I don't believe that Max has done a bad job in any way, but I think it's time that we give Ms. West an opportunity, so I will also vote aye. So, resolution 23002 passes by a vote of 6 to 1.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want, for the record, just to clarify one comment that Councilmember Scott made. This isn't to correct it, it's just to clarify it. There was a comment made about the legal representation provided to the board, and it is provided by independent counsel through a contract. What happened is the attorney for the board, John Kastner, notified me that he had developed a conflict of interest because he was representing a client that the city is directly adverse to in litigation. We're on one side of the litigation, he's on the other side. And it's not just his firm. He was handling that litigation against the city. He notified me of that conflict, and since it's not a waivable type of conflict, then he had to notify me that he could no longer provide the services to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Let's move on to item 13.
Mayor and council's selection of vice mayor, report from city manager.
City Manager's communication number 94, dated April 9, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution 23009 by number and title only.
Resolution number 23009 relating to the vice mayor of the mayor and council selecting a vice mayor.
What's the council's pleasure? Councilmember Romero?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I am very proud to nominate Councilmember Shirley Scott to serve as the next vice mayor of the City of Tucson, and that we pass and adopt resolution 23009.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, my East Side partner, congratulations, and this is really fitting as you're finishing up your sixth term. So, this is the best way to do it, to go out as vice mayor, and I know you're going to be a great vice. When I first became a councilperson, you were vice mayor, and it, so I've always thought of you as a vice mayor almost the whole time I've been on there. Anyway, congratulations.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Councilmember Richard Februs for his service as vice mayor. I thoroughly enjoy his ceremonies and his medallions and his presentations. I know you're not going to stop that, Richard, but I really would like to echo the sentiment by Councilmember Cunningham to Vice Mayor, hopefully soon, Shirley Scott, that it's a wonderful way for you to serve the last year of your sixth term. So, thank you so much for all of your service, and this is very fitting. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? We called it. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Hearing no other discussion, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Februs?
Can't give it up, huh, Richard?
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye. Thank you very much. I appreciate the honor.
Resolution 23009 naming Councilmember Shirley Scott as vice mayor passes unanimously. Let's move on to item 14.
Adjournment?
Council will stand adjourned. Next meeting, April 23rd, 5:30 PM, right here.